All righty, we'll call the meeting to order. We have a small agenda this evening. If anybody needs a copy, they're on the table.
I know John Cronin's coming. I saw him this afternoon.
I saw him earlier too, and he was gonna try and make it here. I'll ask if anyone's recording. Would they make it known? Thank you. First item is the approval of minutes for September 12th and November 9th. You had a chance to read them?
I did, just read them.
Any comments on September 12th?
I think so.
Motions?
It's in a motion to sign the minutes for the 12th.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I was looking for November 9th.
Say what?
I'm looking for November 9th.
Why? Hmm. I got it. I didn't read those yet.
The November 9th ones are quite lengthy.
I'm sorry?
The November 9th ones are quite lengthy.
Yeah, I didn't read them yet, Mr. Chairman. Do you wanna wait until at the end of the meeting for that?
Well, yeah, we can do that. We have a very short one. Next item on the agenda is a referral for Brittany Drive for street acceptance. Ken has drafted a letter for the recommendation, if it's in your packet.
Did the town engineer look into that septic system that goes under the road over to the vacant lot?
Yes, apparently that never got built that way.
He checked the Board of Health records, and there was no construction underneath the or within the right-of-way.
But when the applicant was here, he said that that's how it was built.
Well, apparently it wasn't by Board of Health records.
That's Mr. DiBono's subdivision, correct?
Correct.
Now, I thought that the previous, the original developers suggested that. I don't think that ever got approved by higher powers like DEP and stuff like that.
Okay. I just thought that when Mr. DiBono's here, I thought he confirmed that that's how it was built, but I could be mistaken.
I don't remember that.
And it's been a long time, so... But I thought he said that one or two of the homes, because they didn't have enough upland with the wetland issues, that they had to go across the way with a pumping station and have their leaching fields over on the other side where when you enter, it's a field.
I can, if that's not drainage, stormwater drainage from the road.
No, they said-
I can check with Mario DiBono then as to whether or not that was the case.
Yeah. Are these gentlemen here for Brittany?
No, no.
Okay. Okay.
Try to find the agreement.
So, we're gonna just confirm that, and then, other than that, any other issues with the letter?
That's fine. I just, I'm sure Mr. Rowley did check on it, but for some reason, I really think that Mr. DiBono did mention it, and I thought he said that it was constructed that way, but maybe he mentioned that it wasn't. I just know that it was originally proposed that way on the plan, so...
Mm-hmm. Well, I have his contact information. We can confirm that.
Okay.
If you, this is due October 7th, by October 7th.
Okay.
So, that's almost before the next meeting, so if you wanna condition the recommendation on the basis of my confirmation with the developer.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right. Thank you.
And we could just make that issue part of the report, because we could-
Right.
They could still accept-
But it needs to make sure it matches the Board of Health records. If it is, in fact, what they did, then we wanna make sure that the Board of Health records are accurate.
So, can I get a motion to recommend street acceptance for Brittany Drive with the caveat that-
I'd make a motion that we accept the letter as prepared by Mr. Buckland in reference to Brittany Drive and Jonathan Estates, once we were able to confirm the situation with the septic system going under the road to the field on the right-hand side.
Can I get a second? Second. There was a second.
Second. Get there, Bob.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Next up, we have the continued public hearing of a Form C for 9 Cahoon Street, Melvin Golly covenant extension, which is what you gentlemen are here for?
Yeah, we're neighbors, yeah.
Yeah?
Mr. Golly called in today, said he did get his signature from the financial company that's supporting him, but that he wants to finalize the covenant, the Form F covenant, before submitting. So, he wants to extend this again until October 11th.
Busy October.
Yeah, we do.
We have the zoning articles and WaterWiz.
I thought we had to do the, I thought we had to do an interim date in between to get the town meeting articles, and they're on for the 11th.
On for the 11th.
What was the decision on the, I don't remember the date that you put out there, in between Columbus Day and town meeting? We had to throw another date in.
It was supposed to be on the 10th. Our usual meeting dates in October are October 10th, which is the Columbus Day holiday, and October 24th, which is the beginning of town meeting.
So, we went for the 11th instead?
So, we went for the 11th for the zoning articles.
Okay.
Okay.
Could we postpone Mr. Golly covenant extension until the 25th, or whatever date that would be, the 24th?
The 24th, yes, you could. And we could post, as we usually do, post a meeting before town meeting. We've done it before.
Yep. Yeah, in the cafeteria.
So-
What, do you wanna postpone it till November? Yeah. Why don't we just put it off till November after the town meeting? First meeting in November?
Which would be November 14th, I believe. November 14th.
Yeah. Wanna do that?
Okay.
Okay.
It's not Veterans' Days.
Need a motion for that?
No, Veterans'-
Veterans' Day is celebrated on the 11th.
On the 11th.
Regardless of the date.
Which is a Friday, yeah.
Right, Bob?
November 14th.
So, did somebody make a motion?
I'd make a motion that we extend Form C-9 Cahoon Street for Melvin Golly, the covenant extension, to November 14th, 2016.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right. So, we'll see you in November.
Yeah.
I don't know what's taking him so long. I mean, he was told what he had to do, this goes back to February 22nd. Right, thank you.
Tickets neighbors don't like him. What? Taking it up, they don't party together.
Last item is the minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. If we can jump back into the minutes of November 9th, 2015. This, uh, WaterWiz was supposed to be up for today. Well, it's Bobby Movilia, Movilia, not Novilia.
What?
It's an M., not an N.
There's also a typing error. Are you looking for typing errors?
No, I just saw her name was spelled wrong. There was one earlier.
There's one word that should say "sign," but it's typed out "sing."
A little bit of spell check. Motions?
I don't have a problem with them. I'd make a motion, we accept the minutes of November 9th as written.
Still reading.
Do you have a clean copy of this? Because I was writing on mine. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
My turn. Second. Second.
Gotcha. Discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of November 9th, 2015?
Aye.
Opposed? Were we all there?
Staying?
I'm staying, yeah.
What's he doing?
Uh, he's a lawyer. He's gotta read everything twice.
That makes up for us skimming over it.
I do, that's why I do.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there's nothing further.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
I would. We give Bob a half-hour show.
Are we going into executive session?
Is there a need? Does he have more questions that we're-
I didn't know where we were on the mediation agreement.
They're gonna do what they wanna do.
I think the only outstanding issue was the construction of Baypoint Drive.
Question from the mediator. Question from the mediator came in as to the performance guarantee on Baypoint Drive, asking when the construction-
Should we go into executive session for a few moments just to discuss it and share our opinions, and then-
I retract my motion to adjourn.
Did I, did I miss September 12th when I came in? Did you already-
Yeah, we already done that.
Did we vote? Is-
He asked.
Wasn't seconded.
He asked if the chairman would entertain a motion to adjourn. He didn't say I'd make a motion.
Somebody copied that to Nova. Something like Albeda Nova.
What was the other? Was that the only question we had, or was there something else we talked about?
That was the only question that the mediator had.
Problem is, it's, where do you blend it?
Color is it black? Piece is fresh.
Eight years old.
Are you in executive session?
No, no, not, not currently.
Okay.
Regarding that one little clarification, do you feel that is something that needs protection under executive session?
Yes. Yes.
I didn't like the agreement.
Hmm?
I, I had a problem with the agreement.
Well, okay.
Maybe it's just me.
Then I would look for a motion.
Make a motion that we enter into executive session and, I'm not quite sure how to word it, but at adjournment.
And not return to regular session?
Not return to regular session. Thank you.
For the purpose of discussing court-ordered mediation with?
Baypoint.
Baypoint Country, uh, Baypoint LLC, whatever.
Yes. Say it again?
Reason number three for going into executive session.
Oh, it isn't actually, but my explanation is enough. Three is litigation. Um, I forget. Anyway, the, the explanation I gave is sufficient.
So.
So, I will look for a roll call. Vote, vote was it?
Has that motion been seconded?
Second.
Michael?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes for me. John? Bob? Good evening. Sorry we didn't do it five minutes earlier and got you out.
That's all right. Good night.
You too.